It is six o'clock, so actually it's one minute past six, so perhaps we'll go for this now? Yeah?
Yep.
Let's call off our meeting. All right, so welcome. Nice to see we've got a good audience again. Yeah, something to report. I accepted the invitation to go to the Dory Gallery in Regent Street on Saturday and had a chance to talk to Edward Bell, who's the artist who's currently got some exhibits in there. Really, really interesting and interesting talking to him and the Dory Gallery. It might be interesting just in a future meeting of one of our groups, just to ask them and to come along and talk about what they're trying to do. The exhibition, Edward Bell, for those of you that you don't know, was an artist that worked with David Bowie, doing his album covers and recording David Bowie's life in pictures over a couple of years. Really, really interesting. The exhibits that were there, honestly, I have been to major galleries elsewhere in Europe and the exhibition that's currently in the Dory Gallery is world-class and would go really well in any major gallery in the world, really. Interesting because Edward Bell is selling his collection, he lives locally to Flangothland and wants to raise money for the Dory Gallery because he thinks that it's under-promoted, yeah? And that with some work, other major collections of art, yeah, and interesting collections of art could be attracted to the gallery. And talking to him, he sees the Dory Gallery in Regent Street as becoming a destination art gallery for art lovers. So that's kind of really interesting. It is still there, I believe it's there until Saturday, so if you have an opportunity just to pop in for five minutes, that would be, yeah, that would be great. John?
It's a bit of the background, really, because the artist, Dory himself, died of a heart failure in Sydney and his wife is struggling to keep the place going. And I think that adds context.
Yeah, thank you. There's also, also interestingly, there are artists from across the North West who are coming to work in the gallery and are putting some exhibits in there. So just worth going and having a look. It's a bit warm at the minute, I don't know about you. You have been hiding a little bit from the sunshine, it's too hot at the minute. Before we start, can I just remind people, because the last couple of meetings, there have been occasions where people have tried to talk and other people have spoken over them. We've got an etiquette to this, which is, if somebody is talking, can you please let them finish and not shout above them? We did have a practice where we all turned off our microphones, so that would be really helpful. Gareth, if anybody does, if there is two people talking, if you can try and control that, that would be good, because it's not helpful to the meeting. So that's all I've got to say. Have we got any statements from the public?
I'll just bring people up to see and then they can comment and if not, we'll... Everybody back down. Anybody wish to say anything?
Okay, thank you very much. Welcome Sergeant Rich Evans. It's your turn, so welcome to our meeting. I think this is the first time you've spoken to us or the second, I can't remember.
It is the first, it is the first time, yes, so thank you very much. So I'll just give you a brief overview of what's been going on in Flangothland and then invite any questions, if that's appropriate at this stage. Okay, so I'm not sure previously what, how Sergeant Martin Jones did it, but I've just got a little bit of a brief report to update the meeting on in terms of policing that's been going on last couple of months. So the current policing district priorities, which is to say the priorities that are dictated by the inspector for the policing district of Conway and Demarche Rural as a whole, they're currently domestic violence and licensing. I'm pleased to report that in terms of domestic violence, there's no current identified issues in Flangothland or the surrounding areas. Licensing has been decided upon as a priority because of, obviously, the situation we've been in in terms of the licensing restrictions and pubs not being open for some time, it was felt that it needed some emphasis on licensing in the last month when the pubs have reopened, just in case there's, I guess people have had this sort of pent-up frustration, really, from not being able to go out drinking over 18 months. So licensing was a very much a priority for this last six weeks or so. Pleased to report there's been no major issues in Flangothland. The first couple of weeks when the pubs opened up, there were some minor reports of ASB disorder associated with one of the premises in town, I think the Prince of Wales, we had a couple of calls there. But subsequently, we've deployed some sort of resources to Flangothland on a Friday, Saturday night to kind of address that and there's been no further problems going forward. So those are the priorities at a district level. More locally, in Flangothland, priorities that my local neighbourhood police team have been concentrating on. Traditionally, illegal off-roading is a problem this time of year, but so far this summer, we've not seen as many calls as previously. There's a patrol plan that we have in place over weekend to address the key locations that have traditionally been subject to that illegal off-roading in the past, so that's going well at the moment. We've also been supporting our roads policing unit, who have an ongoing operation Darwin, which is aimed at reducing fatal collisions. Unfortunately, this summer there has been tragically some fatal RTCs already. Our role in that, obviously because we're not trained in terms of fast roads policing, our role in that is very much engagement, so plotting ourselves off at key locations, the ponderos, places like that where motorcyclists tend to gather on a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and just trying to engage with them in terms of being visible and just speaking to them, really, about the dangers of excess speed. We've also recently been undertaking some speed checks on the A5 near to the fire station, the Co-op and the Wild Pheasant, and we're in the early stages of trying to set up a local speed watch group, that's just as a result of some concerns that have been raised about speeding on the A5. I've clarified with Go Safe, the A5, the locations that I've just touched on there, they're an archived site at the moment, that is to say that Go Safe don't actually have that as an enforcement site. So I think in terms of the first step, in terms of maybe getting Go Safe back there to do some enforcement, is to build up some evidence in relation to the excess speed. So we've been deploying with our handheld device to try and do that, as well as early stages of trying to set up a local speed watch group that might be able to assist us in gathering some data on excess speed in those locations. So that's speeding. Rural acquisitive crime, generally this time of year, again, we sometimes get hit with rural crime on some of the farms. Again, this summer, so far, touch wood, we've had that pretty much under control. There has however been, in the last month or so, a spate of theft of garden ornaments from some addresses in Flangothland around the Aberada and Penguin area, but I'm pleased to report four people have been arrested in relation to those thefts and they're currently under investigation and have been released on bail whilst inquiries continue. They weren't concerning in terms of, essentially, they weren't burglary dwelling offences, they were literally theft of ornaments from gardens. But since those have been identified and the suspect arrested, there haven't been any further issues. And then just the town in general, we've tried to seek to deploy resources on a Saturday and Sunday in the town during the day because it has been very busy since the lifting of restrictions. Thankfully, although it's been busy, we haven't seen any sort of increase in public order or antisocial behaviour, certainly not to the extent of last summer when we had to have the dispersal order in place, but we're mindful that we are monitoring how busy the town is on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, making sure that the people who visit the town are behaving themselves. And if needs be, if we do get reports of antisocial behaviour, then we can move to have the dispersal order in place like we did last summer. So that's really a quick overview of what we've been up to. Yeah, I don't know if anybody wants to pass any comments at this stage?
Anybody got any questions? Stuart? Can't hear you Stuart, you're on mute.
How's that?
That's fine.
Okay, sorry about that, yeah. Yes Sergeant, good to see you here. I've had a call or two calls this afternoon about two shops that had some people enter into them and weren't wearing masks, and asked to put the masks on, they were treated to abuse. One of the shops is quite a vulnerable person and they were frightened. My advice to them was call 999 if that happens, but they've also asked, could we get PCSOs around so that if anything's happening, we can have a quick response? I've also advised them if they would like to put signs up to say masks must be worn, but your thoughts on that would be appreciated Sergeant, thank you.
Yeah, which shops have been affected with that Stuart?
Cootch was one of them, the other one didn't say.
Okay.
It's in the courtyard, yeah.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think you've probably given appropriate advice there in terms of, obviously, non-wearing of masks in shops, it's down to the shops to kind of police that. Obviously, if they challenge them and then that, that then falls into kind of aggressive antisocial behaviour, threatening behaviour towards the staff, then yeah, absolutely, 999 is the correct port of call there. But I will, I'll obviously make the PCSO aware of the problems and just increase patrols in those shops. Signage as well is obviously very important in that situation, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you Chair. Just one thing, if I may, just to follow up, I was part of the speed watch, the original one in Flangothland, four years ago. We've still got the gear, I'll get in touch with you.
Yeah, great. It's Phil, I think, that the PCSO Carl have been in touch with. I think our community speed watch coordinator, John Morris, did try to get a speed watch off the ground again in the last couple of years, and I think it was a lack of volunteers which kind of made that hard then. So yeah, if we can reinvigorate that, that would be great.
Thank you Chair. Constable Palmer?
Yes, thank you. Do you use drones with the off-road at all?
Yeah, so there was an operation at the start of the summer which involved the use of drones. That would reasonably be successful if we, you know, if the problem, if we continue to see the problem through the summer, I think I touched on the fact that we haven't actually, it doesn't seem to have been as bad as previous summers so far this year, but obviously if we run another operation, because we've got a newly-founded drone unit, then they will be neutralised, absolutely.
Okay, and the other thing was, the people that live on Abbey Road, it's not just the bikes, it's the noise of the bikes, I presume there's not much you can do about that?
Yeah, I'm aware of the noise issue, I think it's been previously sort of raised before my time. My understanding, and there might be people on the meeting that know a little bit more about, my understanding of that was that the Department for Transport were going to look into noise cameras. It's very much, I think, an issue the Department of Transport were looking into. So I think possibly, an issue that probably needs to be raised with the local MP. You're quite right, there's very little that police can do in terms of, what we found previously is that when we've tried to sort of check on speed, is that speed and noise isn't necessarily linked, so noise can sometimes be worse when these bikes are travelling at low speed in low gears. So it's these noise cameras really that are key and it's a little bit of a watching briefing to inform, I'm trying to get a reply from the Department of Transport in relation to whether noise cameras were ever looked at in this sort of part of the world, but as you can imagine, government departments are quite hard to pin down in terms of getting an answer from, so it's something I probably need to raise with the local MP, really.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Constable Mile?
Thank you Chair. Hello Sergeant Evans. I've just had a text from a resident of Abbey Road, just to say that the last couple of nights, there were being some people in the A Stedward field and last night they actually got onto the roof of the A Stedward. She's tried to report it on 101 and by email, but as yet she hasn't had any joy in getting through.
Yeah, I've been contacted separately by Geoff there down at the pavilion. We're aware of some issues around youth gathering that initially was just gathering, that kind of escalated into them getting on the roof and things, so yeah, that's already in hand in terms of increasing patrols there.
Can I just, I'm sorry about this, I've got a bit of a list. Glad to see about the extra police presence in the town over the weekends in the summer. I think some of the shopkeepers are very worried about when gangs of youths come down and especially if they've got face masks on, they make themselves a bit of a nuisance in the shops and they try and get away with things without paying for them, very worried about that. And also, although it's not too much your problem, the ice cream vans are, well, there's certainly an ice cream van in the park. I did notice one Sunday morning that a police car had actually booked somebody, I believe, that was trying to get into the park or coming out of the park, that was good news. I think, I'm not sure what he was selling, but I doubt he'd be back again. And the other thing, finally Sergeant Evans, is the parking at Chancery still a green nightmare last weekend, didn't help the fact that the road had been recently, you know, re-trimmed or whatever you call it, and the yellow lines hadn't been put down. I understand they're being, hopefully they'll be done by this weekend, but if you could, I know technically not your problem again, but an uniform, you know, when a uniform arrives somewhere, it does tend to make a difference. That would be great if you could do that, thank you.
Yeah, anywhere, there's going to be a volume of people, we're quite happy to patrol, like you say, specifically enforcing parking, you know, that's down to Demarche, but certainly just because of the volume of people that are there, we'd be quite happy to include that on our patrol plan, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Before I come back to Stuart, can I just ask, is there any problem with bogus callers in town currently that you know about?
We've certainly not been made aware of anything, no.
All right, interesting. I don't, I'm sorry because it's kind of more personal, on Sunday, my wife was on the drive next to our house and this gentleman, really, really scruffily dressed in joggers and a dirty t-shirt, came up and saw my wife, she was behind a vehicle, he didn't see her initially, and then was insistent that he had a parcel to collect from us. I asked him for ID, there was no ID. I asked him to leave and he wouldn't leave, he was quite insistent that there was a parcel somewhere. Eventually he did leave. I did phone 111 and picking up, I think, something Mel said, I waited for 111 for 20 minutes before I rang off. Yeah, I then went on to the communicate by text thing, I can't remember what you call it now, yeah, and spoke to them there and told them the story and what they told me to do was to phone the GP, phone the post office, this guy claimed he was from the post office, phone the post office and find out whether they should be picking up something from your house, that was what they said. I then phoned and got through and was assured that it would be brought to your attention, particularly as it had a number for the vehicle that this guy was driving. The post office, by the way, said they don't do collections on the Sunday and if it was him, he'd have ID, et cetera, et cetera, and it just, yeah, it was really difficult to bring it to anybody's attention and when I did, it was a reaction, really, yeah.
Did they provide you with a reference number at all to indicate that the call had been logged?
Nothing, that, no, I've got, what I'll do perhaps, because what I did was I took a photo shop of the communication I had online, there was no reference, no anything, nobody seemed interested particularly, which is quite worrying because we've got quite a vulnerable population in Flangothland in terms of that kind of stuff.
Yeah, absolutely, you know, as a minimum, we could have, we could have sort of followed up some intel checks on the, did you say there was a registration mark that you provided?
Yeah, provided the registration mark, a description of the guy, everything, and nothing was forthcoming.
Yeah, okay. Would you be able to sort of send me through those details by email, would that be?
Yeah, I can do that, no problem at all, yeah.
You've got my email details, yeah?
Yeah, we will, easy to find, yeah, no problem.
Certainly nobody from the control room has kind of made me aware or as far as I'm aware, made my team aware of the incident. I'm sure it will have been logged, but certainly, yeah, I can look into whether it has, you know, been designated a reference number and what they did with it.
Just a bit worrying, the reaction, really, yeah, given the vulnerability of some residents. Stuart?
Yeah, thank you Chair. I was going to bring up the green, but that's already been dealt with, but the other thing is something the Sergeant said just a few minutes ago and I don't want to go on too much, I'm a motorbiker and all about noisy bikes and all the rest of it, just for information for the Sergeant, when I was in post, I put a speed checker in on the horseshoe passed through the officers and nobody was speeding, it's the noise. So as a motorbiker, it's quite easy to check, just get your police officers to look at the exhaust pipe, there will be an, I can't even say the word, homologation number on the silencer if it's Puckett, if there isn't one, it isn't, that's it, easy peasy, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else got any questions, I'd just say? Thank you very much Rich, thank you.
Okay, no problem.
Cheers, thank you very much, bye bye now.
Thank you.
Statements from county councillors. I noticed that Constable Timms doesn't appear to be in the audience, Mel, would you like to say something? Can't hear you Mel, you're off, yeah.
Sorry, what's been going on really is, I think we've all seen it, the road outside, you know, from the 539, that's been redone, caused a lot of, caused a lot of sort of tail backs last week, but you know, you can't make an omelette without cracking any eggs and I think we're just basically getting on with resurfacing the roads, but it's obviously it's a very bad time of year to do it, but this is a time of year that they always do it, so things are going on. And the other thing is that the 2020 consultation thing is now over and it's going into, well, I think that's another item, isn't it?
Yeah, to the general item later on, yeah.
I'll leave that for now, that's all for me, basically.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, anybody wants to say anything? Stuart?
Yeah, it always is me, isn't it? Constable Mile, I've got an email here of Phil Jones, referenced the Plasmatic thing and I know you want us to go away, just a simple question, do you personally support us having the facility available at Plasmatic? Thank you, simple question.
Simple question, simple answer Stuart, I've never supported it and neither did the Flangothland Town Council when the petition was brought in front of the Town Council, we chose not to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right, thank you very much. Apologies for absence.
Then formally sent to me, Harvey was apologising in advance, but he's managed to connect, so.
Yeah, well done Harvey, yeah. Right, thank you. Any declarations of interest? Minutes, to authorise the chair, I just find the minutes of the previous meeting, I had difficulty finding the minutes of the previous meeting in the documents that were sent out, might just have been me. Did everybody get else, Constable Haddie?
I received them, okay, I'll propose them on the record.
Yeah, anybody seconded by Constable Grimley, anybody got a problem with that? Right, okay, thank you. Financial reports.
Yes Chair, quite a few authorized payments this month, you had the revised or supplement to the agenda and I've just added a few raw, just for information, see how expensive expenses, that's just now as we're going to hopefully get back to sub-semmual similarity in the town hall, we've just got a little bit painted to finish off, Charlie Scott had a lot of peer back to Kevin Howe of Suvia Mileage, a G4's coming from Wrexham, B Jones translation costs for last, that obviously weren't in when it went out, and resources for change consultancy, it's the grant that we got from the lottery to support the work of Shake My Song Off and Team, so that money went into reserves and therefore to access that, we would have to resolve to buy that amount back out of reserve, general reserve to cover that cost. Apart from that, if anybody's got any questions or items on the list, I'd be happy to respond.
Any questions? Anybody like to propose, yeah, Constable Palmer? Can't hear you John.
I'm not sure if we're actually on this bit, the resources for change consultancy, what was that?
As I just explained, that was the grant that we secured, or they secured, for the consultancy to finish the Shake My Song Off and Action Plan, which is...
I see, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Constable Mollack, sorry?
Just a follow-up question on that really, because I was just wondering who submitted that grant application, because I don't remember it being discussed as the Town Council, but yet it's on our books.
A group submitted it, but they don't have a bank account, so it was put into our account as a holding account.
Okay, thank you Gareth.
And signed by the, was that signed by the group, was it?
I can't remember, I think the chairman submitted it, I can't remember, it's so long ago, they went after the name of the chair.
Okay, thank you. Authorized, sorry, financial, sorry, we haven't, it was, it was both seconded, anybody? Right, okay, thank you. Financial statements?
Again, early days really, statements of editor members want to draw any attention to anything. What I realise isn't showing nowadays, because I've got a new system, but can be in the future and will be, is the reserve position. It's a bit different to what appears in the bank reconciliation, because since then, we've transferred as we agreed last month into reserves, so our kind of reserves stand at £1,007,943 and a little bit, 944 only there, of which 73,344 is general reserve and then 34,600 has been fortunately now allocated to asset reserve and obviously we may need to call on quite a bit of that for the repairs to the town hall. So that's the... So that's the reserve position. I realise that in the, um, a report I can print on that, so probably useful to print that off in the future. Uh, clearly with the resolution, well, members agreed on the previous resolution that we would buy that across from reserves, that would still be, leave reserves of £7,100 in our general reserve. So that's still about two, just below six months of expenditure. So that does help the other one. Um, apart from that, if there's any other questions on the reports, I'd be happy to.
We'll have the chance to look at it. Anybody got any questions? Somebody like to propose, we accept it. Thank you. Councillor Mile, councillor Greenley, anybody got a problem with it? Okay, thank you. Uh, planning correspondence. Over to you, councillor Keddie.
Fine, to this, this month for Hollypops Brown Bache. Uh, variation on condition two of planning permission, number three, four, seven, to allow amended design and window details. Uh, there's no objections from A O M B, N R W or CADU. And we had no objection to the original application in July last year. And the amendment is enlarging the hallway, so it makes the house jut out a little bit further with a new set of window design on the front. So, um, does it impact on our decision that we made before or not really? I don't think it does personally, but there we go.
Anybody got a comment?
I propose, I propose we don't object.
Yeah, anybody like to second that? Thank you, councillor Loeb. Uh, anybody got a problem? Thank you.
And then, oh, five, three, one, Mile End Mill, Berwin Street. The, um, the old, uh, Mile End Works. A change of use for the floor to use, uh, as a kitchen. There's a kitchen area existing, so what would happen, all it really is going to happen there is a 500mm duct coming out of an old window opening. Um, so that's the only change you'll see from the outside, which is exactly what you've got on the, on the building opposite, on the factory. There are loads of ducts coming out of that one. I can't see any reason to object to that.
Anybody got any observations or comments? Yes, councillor Davies, yeah.
Yeah, ju- just to say, what a wonderful, um, company. They're doing a superb job. Let's support them in every which way we can.
Here we are. Yeah. Uh, 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 right, I'll take that as a proposal. Councillor Davies, thank you. Anybody like to second that? Thank you, councillor Greenley. Anybody got an issue, problem? Thank you. Uh, planning, uh, well, I've lost my, lost my place now. Uh, planning correspondence will be on that.
We've got the decision, uh, certificate of decision, Chairman, but you only need to note first.
There's no, yeah.
Say again, Gareth, I'm sorry.
Uh, you've got certificates of decision first, but it's only a matter of note, though.
Certificates of decision. Anybody got any comments?
I propose we note them.
Yeah, thank you. Somebody like to second that?
Yeah.
Thank you, councillor Greenley. Anybody got a problem? No, thank you. Planning correspondence.
Yes, Chairman, um, the first one is consultation, um, on draft alternative guidance note, planning for dark skies, or dark night skies. Um, documentation's been sent out and clearly the county council welcome the response of the town council. And, and the recommendation is that we, we consider an appropriate response to the supplementary planning guidance following some discussion of the documentation.
Yeah. Right, Stuart.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, as the Chair of the A O M B, although hard to believe, a few years ago, uh, this was brought up and I, I championed this. I'm fortunate in my working life to have lived and worked in the desert to, to be able to see what it truly means to not have light pollution and see the Milky Way and the satellites going past in the space station. And I wish that we could all do that. However, it is what it is. Um, so I'm all for this. However, just one note, and I think councillor Keddie has, uh, touched on it. We, we need this, but we mustn't make it to owners by new developments. That's all I have to say. Thank you. And I, yeah, I'm happy with that.
Anybody else got anything to say? Councillor Keddie.
Yeah, I did, I did put a note on this, um, in with my planning notes.
Yeah.
There's just four points I've, I've brought up. Stuart's mentioned one. Um, the plan of method, some lighting installations will require planning permission. That's quite a broad statement. And it could be led, every planning application will need such a lighting installation plan. Uh, and the costs of it, um, throughout the document, there is reference to a qualified lighting design engineer being involved. There are instances like domestic installations where you're lighting your garage or your pathway down to your greenhouse or whatever, where just a simple guy, guidance note and a diagram would probably suffice. Um, and then in a bigger screen while the things are setting up especially, perhaps there's some grant aid available. Um, limitation to illuminate, uh, limitations to designs. Well, if this was enforced when we built the square, for instance, we wouldn't be able to uplight the trees or the memorials because so there, there, there are certain considerations there which, well, it could be, it could be a problem to some people. And then the last one is the restrictions to luminaires where they're specifying what luminaires you should use. If you have a specialist in, um, application for one, then you might have to make something yourself or whatever, get some design company to design one. Then there's a process that you're getting approved, which could prove costly and time consuming. So just some little things that if it comes in, you've just got to be aware of them really.
Uh, councillor Carroll.
Um, yeah, just, uh, a note that there's quite a bit of very recent research on the effect of light pollution on biodiversity. And it's been shown to have a major effect with all sorts of wildlife, you know, lighting your garden at night, uplighting trees has a major effect on actually the biodiversity in those trees. So there is good reason for any restrictions on uplighting or unnecessary lighting. Uh, cause it's, uh, still contributing to the ecological emergency.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else? Yes, councillor Greenley.
Um, I was just wondering, is there any specialised guidance for the farming community, for their buildings? If they wanted to extend, because quite often they're up at the crack of dawn and they need their lighting. And if it's going to end up expensive, if they have to have specialist lighting then, you know, not fair on the rural community. There didn't seem to be much planning guidance in the notes that targeted that section of the community.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Stuart.
Thank you, Chair. Should we, um, and, and thank you councillor Keddie for your, um, well-written, uh, notes there. Can we send this back with those notes and councillor Greenley's, um, concerns? Say, yes, we welcome this, however, uh, uh, the caveats are here. And then that would, uh, that would be our, uh, yeah.
Yeah, can I, can I just, can I just say, uh, and, and, uh, uh, support what, what Stuart's had. I, uh, was fortunate a couple of years ago to, um, holiday in Nova Scotia in the cottage on the, on the coast in the dark sky area. Uh, and couldn't believe at the age of 65 what I'd missed. Yeah. I live in an environment where there was too much light. It is absolutely incredible. So, yeah, I fully support this initiative. So we, do we need a proposal, Gareth? Or, yeah, the proposal, I guess, is to send on notes and, yeah.
Yeah, I think councillor Davis underdressed that we, in, uh, agreement in principle to the concept of the planning guidance, with specific caveats, including councillor Keddie's comments and councillor Greenley about little guidance for the farming community who has specific, specific needs. But also, right now, that we, we see this as a major contribution to.
So proposed by Stuart, anybody like to second that? Thank you, councillor Greenley. Is there any, anybody understand, doesn't agree? Everybody agrees. Speak there, councillor Carroll, say, yeah.
Uh, without putting something there on biodiversity, I can't agree with it.
Yeah, I, I, I think I'd say that, you know, we, um, I think the preamble would be having declared a climate and in the emergency that we, you know, we agree strongly in principle of this and recognise the importance it will have on aspects such as light pollution and biodiversity. However, there are one or two areas where we would like to bring to the attention of the county, or the, anybody I can, the county councils.
Yeah, I'm happy to agree on that basis.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Right, uh, town clerk's reports.
Now we've got the. Now we have the, um, sooner or notification that is going to, um, appeal, Chairman.
All right, we, yeah.
Again, councillor Keddie's trying to, uh, cause of the note. It will be done by written, written representation and the issue tonight is, do you want to add more to the previous comments you made?
Councillor Keddie.
Yeah, basically all I've done here, uh, with the notes I attached, is I've gone through all the notes that have been, so, um, submitted with this application. Um, and they've been colour coded to red object, uh, amber needs more information and green for it. Uh, with our response, our previous response, Denver's response, and then the response from the planning inspectorate, which said that they can appear to it quite, quite happily. I think all we have to decide on this one is whether we change our mind on our original decision, uh, uh, and pass further comments or we don't comment at all.
Hmm. Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Chair. Um, yes, councillor Keddie, thank you once again for getting this information. So, uh, as I read it, and please correct me if I'm wrong, um, the, um, the planning inspectorate have come back and basically said the A O M B issue has got nothing to do with the development, forget about that, park that to one side. So if that's the case, we can't do anything about that. Um, our, and I wasn't involved in this previously, I don't think, um, our, um, wording before went down in a certain way. I think if, if we were to change it, we would need to go along with what Denver County Council said. Uh, the rest of it will just mean, mean nothing at all to the inspector. So as you quite rightly say, either leave it alone as it is or change it to, to go in line with what Denver County Council officers say. Uh, that's all I say. I'll have to say about the matter. Thank you.
Paul, what would you, what would you suggest as a, uh, something for us to? Uh, sorry, John Addy's got his hand up for comment. Sorry.
Uh, thank you very much, Chairman. Uh, I don't think our position has really changed on our previous comments. Um, so I would suggest that we offered no further objection or addition to what's already been said.
Paul.
I, I can't disagree with that at all. I totally agree with that.
Okay, so we have a proposal from councillor Haddie. Somebody like to second it? Uh, councillor Loeb, anybody got an objection? No, thank you. Town clerk's report. Sorry Gareth, I'm missing that.
No, it's okay. Um, first one, I think it's, well, they're all fairly self-explanatory. Hopefully won't take too much time. Um, as you know, we have allocation in this first budget for the Q2 grant scheme. And earlier in the year, we, we considered, um, an action plan for the, um, emergency measures that would affect. And one of those was to design a scheme this year to support initiatives that would help, uh, address some of those issues. So, um, the report simply outlines the budget, which is £4,000. And then have, I, um, yeah, is supportive, voting energy efficiency, energy solutions. I say right through to behavioural change. Um, as in the past, the project cost shouldn't be to £5,000 and local cost project would help us get more money through the door. Um, and the projects have to be paid, which would be late to settle, we can get the money in or the, the bills in and pay. Um, the proposal is that, uh, you know, if it's adopted tonight, we would immediately, uh, go out to, uh, community just to the networks we have and urge members to advise as many groups as possible. The application's ready to go, we would go out and then bring the applications back for September to, uh, council uh, for consideration and then hold between equal, on the 28th of September, hold the, uh, public, um, voting event. Hopefully upstairs if, if restrictions don't limit us. Uh, if not, we'd have to come up with something in online or hybrid. As I said, it's based on, um, the action plan to move to identify, which drive forward one of our key priorities as I think.
Okay, anybody got, any comments? Uh, councillor Lovelock.
Thank you. Um, and it sounds really positive and obviously very much in line with the, um, the climate emergency declaration that the town has passed. Um, I think it also from discussions with various town groups, um, very much in line with what they're looking for as well. So I think really positive. Um, I guess, um, a couple of questions, uh, was, um, uh, in previous years, it's been the Chitterslow, uh, group, uh, team, uh, committee that have, uh, led this. Um, particularly as it's targeted at, uh, community groups. Um, but I don't see any reference to Chitterslow in the town clerk's proposal, so I was just wondering, uh, the thinking there. And secondly, we did, we did experiment in previous years, um, with the idea of having a larger sum of funding. Um, that was available if groups worked together. Um, and in particular, given the kind of, the, the challenges around COVID, uh, that many groups are, have been tackling. I just wondered whether, you know, what, what the, the feelings of councillors were on, on making, making that kind of partnership working uh, with the incentive of, of an additional, uh, pot of money. I think for those that weren't members of the council last year, it was, I think, £1,500 was available. Uh, if it was a group proposal and 500 if it was a single proposal. Um, so just interested to hear some ideas there.
Gareth.
Uh, well, if you recall, it's a delegated authority, it's always been driven to the committee. It's, it's actually the budget is held by the town council. Um, the rationale is that this is a town council project, a climate emergency. So, um, it's been capped in the, in the town council's remit this year because as I say, it's, it's, uh, it's not a delegated responsibility to find emergency, it's all done to full council. That's rough, I'll be handed up. Uh, we've got less money this year. Two years ago, we had a bit more money. Uh, whilst except we, we thought we could suggest joint bids might, uh, get more money. Could certainly help that if, if the members feel that's broken. I just think it's nice to get back out there with the scheme, which, you know, the last one was just prior to lockdown and it was really good evening in the Raffa, as you recall. And went down very well. So, you know, it is well, well, it's a sweep. Maybe just like, get, get the ball rolling again for the year because we started last year. Um, but if members want, they want to do that, if they want to suggest a, a joint scheme, um, collaboration could, could attract thousands. Um, or, uh, the only thing is, do we limit that to one collaborative scheme? Or if we get four collaborative schemes, that's four people take all the money, or four groups. Whereas if you had one, you've still got potential of six other groups getting money.
Yeah, I.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, at all, you know, we do a 50/50, so 2,000 and 2,000 for smaller brands. Makes sense to me if you want to do that.
Yeah, it's, uh, can I, can I ask what's changed Gareth? Cause as long as I've been on the council, the Chitterslow group have kind of organised this and it's been under their umbrella. So has there been a change in the financial regulations?
No, it's always been, if you recall, there's always a, there's always a report to council to delegate the responsibility.
Yeah.
To the committee to administer. But that's because it's targeting Chitterslow aims, what the rationale more is, it's a council. This money is targeting a council priority which we've identified in an action plan. So it's, 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 it's only a matter of, um, all members will have a say on the, the decision of which patients will go forward.
Okay, thank you. And, and the other, the other question I've, I've got is, is, is actually the process. Because what happened, what happened last year, um, um, was that, you know, let me say, I may say stuff is voted through, but no, there were, um, there were a lot of, a, a, a lot of children voted. I've got no, absolutely no issue with children voting at all. Yeah, uh, but yes, uh, it's, it was kind of the case that the. in the meeting, about fifty percent of the meeting were parents and their kids. So all of the money went to those groups. And I, 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 I just think we need to think about that a little bit, not to advantage, not to disadvantage those groups that, um, uh, that, that sort of have children involved in them. But rather to make sure that it's not a disadvantage, yeah.
If you recall, you must vote on every, every, you've got to score every, um, project. If there was, if there was a form that hadn't scored every project, they are discounted. I accept that, that they have to score every project and then some of them. My, you know, self demure of mind, I wouldn't have thought, and the food bank scored the votes. I said that it's children related. But I think it does balance itself out because you're not allowed just to vote for your favourite one. You have to vote for everyone.
Just, just an observation that I now got a few nods from other councillors.
That would be a question, just say it has to be adults, but I think that.
Councillor Palmer.
Yes, I found this a really good scheme. And so many organisations, scouts and churches have benefited from it. But reluctantly, I've got to ask, can we afford it? And I do ask reluctantly.
Well, it's in the budget. As I said, the rest of the money, primarily the bulk of the money, imagine would go on to the town hall, but we've just put reserves in. Uh, we have £34,000 reserves, we have £2,000, £20,000 project line, so that's £54,000 there. We have savings on business rates, non domestic rates, as you recall. But we're only paying half of that this year. So there's £5,000 there. Um, I've discovered there's £3,000 in gas bill that we've been charged an extortion amount, but now we've got a, um, what do you call them? One that reads itself, meter, I can't remember now. Uh, that's coming down significantly. So we can ask, in September, that money is becoming back to us. It's held in, so there are resources out where, but if you feel you don't want to take that risk, like we did last year, where we held that payment subject to another project that we were laughing, then that's your decision.
Okay, anybody else got anything to say? The, uh, sorry councillor Lu.
In the, uh, in the past, the scheme has always been extremely beneficial for the small groups in town. Who benefited from it quite enormously. So I would like to support it going forward. I know it appears to be unfair by allowing the children to vote. But if people want the money, they've got to organise themselves and get enough people there to vote for their scheme. You know, just pointing, just putting it forward and sitting on your backside and saying, give me the money. You've got to do something about it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I only mentioned it because I, it was something that people who had applied last year commented on. So, uh, councillor Lovelock.
I could just come back in, and obviously the decision will be in September. Um, I've spoken to, um, change this conservation today, go over the half the drawings. There's a meeting on Monday and hopefully within a week or two, we will have prices. So during August, we will have an indication of the cost of the work. So if we are in a position where we need to pull our pull in our bail, try around our waist and not spend any more money, we, we can decide in September not to go ahead with the scheme. At the moment, it's the principle to go ahead and there's no guarantee. And so do we go back, back in September, we do the budget at that stage.
Councillor Lovelock.
Um, I guess on that basis, I might propose to postpone the, the discussion until we've got a better grasp on that and we can also have a think further about, um, the, uh, the, the questions that we've raised about the, uh, part, the partnership budget and how to best manage the issue of, of voting. Um, I do have somewhere, I have the notes from when Chitterslow organized it the last time and we had a working group review afterwards. Uh, and we actually outlined in that working group meeting reflections on how to do it another time. And I, I can go back and dig those out and maybe they could be included in a, another report. But I think it was something like, you know, that each, um, each project had a number of votes, maximum, or each group had a maximum number of votes. Um, because if you remember the last time we held it, um, there were, you know, people put in some really good work on their presentations. Um, but just because they didn't have all the children in the room, they, they couldn't, um, they couldn't win or didn't win. So it's kind of that balance. We don't want to get rid of that energy, but, um, but obviously get some proportionality into the, the voting system. Um, so I don't know, I would propose that we, I could see some hands up, but I'm putting on the table a, a vote for, um, postpone the decision.
Councillor Palmer.
I, I would support it in principle, definitely.
Yeah, councillor Haddie.
Um, I think we're getting confused here between the mechanics of the actual evening and how to vote and who can vote with the general principle of whether we proceed or not. The general, the presumption of participatory budgeting that we've undertaken in quite a few recent years has been good, it's been sound. And I understand from what the clerk has said, the money's there. I think in principle, to delay it would be, it would be pointless. So you can argue about how to run it later, but do we proceed with it? And my answer would be yes.
Councillor Carroll.
Thank you, Shaun. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, first I'd like to congratulate Gareth on how seriously he's taken our emergency declaration and the themes of it. And there's a couple of issues. One, kids. Um, all the areas where we're proposing to put the money in this, they're the ones who are going to be affected the most. So, uh, they are the biggest stakeholders, so I think that's fair. And we have declared a climate and ecological emergency. Um, which is going to have an awful lot more effect than a hole in the town hall roof. So I think we should vote for this now and if we can wriggle some money out somewhere else, even from reserves, we should consider that at a later date.
Okay, the proposal, sorry Stuart, you'd like to touch.
Okay, I was going to propose the recommendation, Chair.
Yeah, I was just going to say, we've, um, we've got a proposal in front of us. Anybody like to propose it? Stuart has just proposed it. Anybody like to second it? All those in favour? Or nobody against, that's great. Thank you. Naked takeaway.
Yes, Chairman, um, interestingly, it's like there's so many versions you get in Welsh, but, uh, I think takeaway nice is probably the best. Uh, you recall, we've sort of kicked this can around the street, literally these cans around the street, tipping tins for a while. Um, I know that, um, councillor Carroll attempted to, uh, people, I hope to sheminate, we've been round. Kelly Mydavies took the promise after contact lots of businesses and unfortunately there has been little or no take up, but no take up in, in Clangothlin. I think the original concept for that's slightly, the reason we embarked on this was we had suggested that we might do it a different way and give the tins to people. I could obviously project eventually that because of the transfer of the virus, where people taking their own tins in, so they're all actually cleaned and packed up. So I think, I mean, how we would, that sort of experimental approach, which would have been, could have been a bit different to mould. But the dilemma then, obviously the team face now is that they've got targets to hit with. Welsh government and the whole lot in the moment, which are allocated to the people who play together. But their monitoring is, is effective and, uh, they are happy with the Welsh government. Why? Because of the tins that we can use. So the recommendation, I think, is that despite a lot of people, we just thought we would ask what our position is. And if the members are happy, we just thought we could. The appetite, excuse the pen, I'm sorry.
Councillor Kelly.
I'm sorry, I, I, the last thirty seconds I've been absolutely dead, I can hear children talking in the background or something.
Oh, there you go, yeah.
It's not me, I've got no children.
I said we've got a hoony on or something.
I'm not much of a people then.
But can I, can I just, can I just say, just to reinforce what Gareth said? Said it was, it was a, uh, a scheme that we were involved in from the very beginning. It was laudable, its aims were, yeah. And it just was something that worked in mould and didn't work in Clangothlin. I think partially because of the nature of our takeaways, um, as much as anything. But I think even in, even in mould, um, they've, they've had some, uh, uh, places that have initially joined the scheme and then have kind of backtracked because it's, it's much harder work than it appeared to be on paper. But it's something that'll never, never, never work in Clangothlin at, at, at this moment. Um, so I would, I'd, I'd, I'd support the notion that we formally withdraw. Anybody like to propose that? Yeah, Peter Carroll, thank you. Anybody like to second it? Yeah, councillor Palmer, anybody got any objections? No, thank you. Amendment to standing orders.
Yes, Chairman, you recall last meeting, we received a recommendation from the Human Resources Committee to amend standing orders, which we agreed. So, um, as they've now been agreed, you will see they've now, that amendment has now been incorporated into the standing order. We need to now formally approve the standing orders because at the beginning of every piece of all standing orders, you have to have the date of formal approval. So it's again, it's just a process really, Chairman, bringing it back for members to recognise amendments have been done and so with tonight's date as the adoption of the.
Right, anybody like, anybody got any comments? Anybody like to propose that? Uh, councillor Davis, seconded by councillor Greenley. Anybody got any objections? Thank you. Uh, next item, notice of proper officers' actions. Councillor Haddie, yeah, waving your hand.
Yes, I, I must say, I was surprised to see this item on the agenda as it would be improper, in my view, to discuss it here as it's an ongoing personnel matter. It's not been helped, I'm afraid, by threats to refer the matters to Welsh Office. Audit Office and doing formal and semi unconfidential HR matter by Greek and faith group with only half a story. It appears to be a move to thwart the actions of the committee delegated to deal with such matters. And I propose that we refer it back to the Human Resources Committee, who will no doubt report in due course if that is appropriate.
Uh, Chairman. But I can mention, the intention isn't that, it's just notification of actions that have been undertaken by the proper officer, having been alerted to issues. You are aware of the issues. It isn't thwarting anybody carrying on. There's no intention, it's a simple notification. And the requirement for members to realise that, that actions may have consequences. And particularly in the terms of, if the audit office got involved, we may have financial issues raised. So it's, it's not, not here to prevent the action of the Human Resources Committee. The Human Resources Committee continuing with those matters as they are free to do. This is a simple notification of potential risk that we have identified.
Councillor Haddie.
There is a presumption in that statement, Clark, that what you say is correct. And I argue that that's not necessarily the point.
Right, we, we, we have, we have a proposal that, that's been seconded, that this discussion, uh, any discussion with regards to this takes place in a, um, in the, the Human Resources Subcommittee and is brought back to council. Yeah, uh, any, anybody got any objection to that?
Just, just a comment, yeah, for me. Yeah, I, I fully support that. Uh, and I, I'd just like to make the statement that if you pro, if it had been followed in the first place, we wouldn't be where we are now. I'm sorry for saying that, but it's the truth. So I fully support what we're doing. Get it back to HR, let them do their job, bring it back to full council and then we can deal with it from there on.
Thank you very much. Anybody got any objection? Okay, thank you. All right, correspondence.
Uh, yes, Chairman, we had none until yesterday, as you will see, the supplement. Uh, and first is just a statement from a concerned resident, shall we say, that advised members of the situation, historic situation, which she wants to disassociate. Uh, some of the members here, I don't recall this issue, but it does relate to removing the trees on, uh, on Parade Street and the subsequent erection of some, uh, trees. And then after these, of course, I think they're next appearing on the tree. As, as I said, this is Rita's head and this lady's been accused of this again and she made a quite catastrophic statement in the past and she has evidence that she's been given. I just want members to know that, um, of this so that you have a notice and this representation of the inside hotel there. And I said I would present it to them.
Councillor Greenley.
Um, yeah, I was actually on the council then. And, um, I think everybody has the right to protest, to an opinion. An opinion was put forward. Uh, it, looking back, it was actually quite funny, but it's not funny for the lady concerned because she approached me before and asked if I had heard these rumours. I told her I hadn't and I told her to put her mind at ease. That there was no way in the world that we were blaming her for it. Now, I was involved at that time and that was my personal point of view. To put it to rest, I'm very sort of upset that people are still raising this because it's obviously upsetting her. So I would like to ask them, please, don't repeat things like that. You know, it's upsetting her. It's a long, long time ago. You know, if you're a councillor, you put your neck forward on the line. You end up with big shoulders and thick skin and a good sense of humour. And that's the way I take things. But obviously this is upsetting the ladies, so please desist from repeating it. Thank you.
Okay. All right, any proposal, please, that you know it. Thank you, councillor Kelly, seconded by councillor Greenley. Anybody got any objection? Thank you. Gareth.
And the second is a formal request from traffic and road safety officer for the council's comments on the consultation proposals that we presented to us as a presentation over the last meeting, Chair.
Can I?
Why?
Anybody? Come in.
Yeah, can I say something, Chair? Um, in response to councillor Davis's email regarding this, uh, I have sent, I did send an email around this afternoon. I don't know if anyone, if all of you have read it. But just to say, and I'll repeat it, what happened in Clangoth, it was a consultation for the community to be involved with a consultation. It wasn't statutory. It could just have easily have been called a community engagement. Any statutory engagement consultation will take place after the cabinet meeting if the decision is to go ahead with the scheme. Um, my understanding of Mike Jones's email is that he's asking Van Gogh in town council if we're happy with the, the way the consultation was implemented and if we have any comments about it. He's not asking or expecting us to put any new proposals forward. That's already, um, gone up to, um, to the cabinet. The papers were done today. So, uh, I mean, basically, I, I would like to say that I would propose that we say, that we thank Denbyshe County Council officers for organising and participating in the consultation and that Clangothin Town Council reaffirms this commitment to the 2020 scheme as it always, as it always has been in favour of it. That's it.
Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Chair. Um, uh, just a simple couple of the one liners. The process of consultation with DC officers was flawed because they didn't follow the chart proposals. with DC officers was flawed because they didn't follow the charter proposals. Let's not beat about round the bush, I sent you the relevant paragraphs from the charter today, they didn't follow it. However, we are where we are. I'm surprised actually that cabinet, those cabinet papers weren't online today. I have made my feelings known, I'm sure you know that, to the county. If they'd have done the job in the first place that they should have done, following that charter that we signed with them, then we wouldn't be where we are today. Thank you, Chair, that's all I'm going to say.
Right, councillor Lovelock.
Just a quick note to say that I think Mel's proposal that we submitted letters of support is spot on. We've even been, I think, compared to the usual level of consultation on projects such as this, the Langothlun 2020 project has been extremely well consulted on multiple rounds and sought as wide a range of perspectives as possible and tried hard over many years to incorporate the wide range of perspectives into the proposals. I'd quite like to write a list of things that have been considered and have been looked at based on those feedback, that feedback and why those things have, you know, such as the Roundabout, the Mini Roundabout have been removed. You know, I think the, when you think about the level of consultation for such projects in other places, that the project has actually gone well above and beyond. We cannot possibly aim to make everybody happy, but I wholeheartedly support councillor Miles's proposal that we reaffirm our support as the town council. I think it's been an excellent project. We've even been approached as Langothlun 2020 to consider an award for excellent consultation processes. So it's up to DCC whether they go ahead with that award. But we should recognise what's been achieved and the efforts that have been made.
councillor Haddie.
We all understand that the opinions of the residents have been incorporated into the presentation to Derbyshire County Council Cabinet. And I'm sure as individuals, you've all expressed an opinion. But this council has supported this project since its inception. And we indeed funded part of the CAGD's report, despite a report to the contrary. But I propose that we again express our support for this development.
councillor Carroll.
Thanks, Shem. I've taken part in consultations as a resident and a business owner over this project for several years and it's been offered out to residents and businesses to consult on over the last few years. I don't think as a councillor, I have anything to give that overrides what the population and business population have already fed into the consultation. So I think we shouldn't express our opinions as councillors because they're far less relevant than what's already been taken into account. So again, we should write in support of the proposals, but not offer any objection.
Yeah, thank you. We have a proposal from councillor Mile. Yeah, anybody like to second that? Councillor Carroll, thank you. Anybody?
I've already seconded it.
Ah, sorry, anybody object to that?
Yes, can I object with a caveat, please? Can I vote against it with a caveat? Don't forget people, it was myself and the former councillor, as a former councillor and former councillor issues that put that 500, that kick-started this project. I've always supported the project, but with caveats. And because our caveats, we still don't know whether they've changed the scheme or not. And that is just part of the cause. So for that reason, I welcome a scheme, a scheme, but I will not vote for it in its form that was presented to us. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much.
Can I just come in there and say that that 500 grand that you got was actually 70,000 and it was nothing to do with this scheme, as you know very well?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Chair, but that's factually incorrect.
Right, gentlemen, let's not start an argument. So we've got councillor Miles's proposal, we've got councillor Davis, who didn't support the proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair.
It's it. We have.
We haven't voted on it yet.
Sorry, I thought I had. Although, although in favour, yes? All those in favour? All but councillor Carroll?
And me.
Sorry, all but councillor Davis. Sorry, I apologise. I apologise, Peter.
You're doing well, sir, thank you.
Can I just, before we finish, just before we finish, ask Shay and Harvey, who have kind of sat through two of our meetings now, yeah? I'm guessing we're not as good as Coronation Street, yeah? Is it, is it, is it an experience that's kind of worthwhile to you? Yeah?
I think absolutely. I find it really interesting, especially when it comes to things, when we're talking about the climate change, you know, the tags, I think it's important, like, well, I've not voiced my opinion on stuff yet because I agree with most things. I feel like it's important that a young person is on the board to say, maybe if it's something in the long future, that I'd be like, hold up, you know. So I think me being on the board and, well, a young person, I think it's very important and I enjoy being on it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Shay, you're nodding.
Yeah, I completely agree with Harvey and decline your comment about Coronation Street. I think it's a lot more interesting than Coronation Street.
Okay. I haven't watched it since about 1960 something, so.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to what me and Harvey can input into the council and what we can help develop into the community of Langothlun, really. So, yeah, thank you.
I guess that's what I'm getting at a little bit, in that, I don't know how fellow councillors feel about it, but I don't think that where it's appropriate and we've got something that we're discussing, like some of the items to do with climate change this evening, that I personally would have no objection to Harvey and Shay being part of the debate, yeah? Though obviously they would be unable to vote. Has anybody got any objection to that going forward? Yeah? So the next meeting, gentlemen, yeah, where appropriate, you can contribute. So, yeah.
Yeah, thanks very much.
Yeah, councillor Palmer. Can't hear you, John.
I was just going to say that, Shem. I appreciate you asking the guys their views, but I think incorporating them throughout the week can be very valuable. I would support that.
Very good. councillor Lovelock.
Thanks. I also think that would be extremely valuable and I hadn't realised that they weren't able to. So I'm really pleased to hear your voices and would love to hear that more. It was actually a comment also and maybe particularly relevant to what, to your involvement, Harvey and Shay. We've been talking about consultation and the importance of the town council considering whether it wants to feed into particular consultations. And it's just come up while I've been on, while we've been on the call, saying about the Derbyshire five-year plan. And I wonder if that's in fact a consultation that we should be participating in as a town council and looking to submit a formal reflection, a formal submission of that, of that five-year plan, in particular, making sure that we incorporate perspectives from Harvey and Shay as well. So I don't know the timings of that or maybe we could look into that and start to draft something for presentation through the town council at another meeting.
Okay, thank you.
We, I have, because I'm also on the, I care the school council, we've had a meeting with Derbyshire council for the, as the representative for the five-year plan and the ideas going forwards. But in terms of the town council, I don't see why not equally from the town council perspective as well. But I'd just like to point out that the school has given their opinion on the five-year plan and what about what going forwards.
Ahead of the game already.
Just a thought, just a thought, Harvey. How often does your school council meet?
Once every half-term.
Once every half-term. I, it's, it's an offer. We've invited you to our meeting if you would like, yeah? To invite me, I'd quite happily come along to your school council meetings as well, thus reinforcing the link.
Yeah, thank you very much. I've contacted the forms of the, each head of year and the form reps and stuff to say that when they confront the students, to say instead of what, not just what you want seen at school, but also what they want seen in Langothlun. But the week I suggested that, year seven, eight, nine and 10 all went off with Covid. So I think it'd have to be something we take off after we come back to school in the summer, September even. But yeah, I welcome that. Thank you very much.
So our next scheduled meeting, sorry, councillor Haddie has put his hand up.
Just a very quick one. Despite scathing comments, the councillor Palmer's begonias are beginning to look really rather nice. So I thought it would be an ad hoc opportunity to say, well done.
Yeah, thank you very much councillor Palmer, who is looking, who is looking fitter than ever because he's still running up and down the street with a bucket every morning. Councillor Lovelock.
Sorry, it's, I was clear, I suggested we might respond, look to respond to the town council to the, to the five-year plan. Is that something we wanted to take forward?
Oh, yeah, I'm guessing it's not, it's not an item on the agenda. So I'm kind of assuming that what we would need to do is bring it forward to a future meeting. Yeah?
Okay, Chair.
Chair, can I just point out you missed an agenda item, but you sort of.
Sorry, what did I miss?
Reports to the town council, reports of which were to you representatives. So you sort of drifted into that.
Oh, sorry, yeah, sorry.
That's the opportunities, we said, for either Shay or Harvey to report anything.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Then obviously that's the position and that is, as you correctly identified, they can have an input to a council meeting on any item and what they simply can't do is vote.
Excellent. Has anybody got anything to report? Any councillors who are on other groups? councillor Davis.
Thank you, Chair. Just, it's only a quick one. The hydropower thing, I was in contact with the clerk late last week and beginning this week and it is ongoing. Applications have been filled in for monies. So it's a horrible thing to say, but watch this space. We are actively continuing to work on it. And as I've got stuff in, I do keep my fellow two members of the committee.
Well done. Thank you, Stuart. Good to hear. John Palmer?
Yes, we had a task and finish group on reviewing the network of footpaths around Langothlun. We've actually got a group together and we'll be having our first general meeting next week in Blassnae.
Well done. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, thank you. We don't have a scheduled meeting in August unless something happens and we call an emergency meeting. I know there are a couple of subcommittee meetings over the next, the next week or so. But can I just say, thank you very much for all your hard work on the art of the people of Langothlun and enjoy your well-deserved summer holiday.